It's Tuesday, June the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, time is four o'clock. And we're going to open the Republican meeting in the Citrus County School Board. The first thing I wanted to allude to, and I know it's an all reminds what happened over the weekend sunny in Orlando, and we know it was a senseless murder of innocent victims by a maniacal individual who followed tenants of hate. And I'd like us to take just a moment, if you will, to sit in your seat and not standing, and have a moment of silent prayer for the victims. Amen. Today holds sadness that I just referred to, and we also have hope. It's Flag Day, and that's what all the flags are here for. And Flag Day is the day celebrating the symbol of our country and our nation. It's celebrated on June fourteenth, and it commemorates the adoption of the flag of the United States in seventeen seventy-seven by resolution of the Second Continental Congress. In nineteen sixteen, President Woodrow Wilson officially proclaimed that June the fourteenth is Flag Day, and an act of Congress in nineteen forty-nine established National Flag Day. One thing we particularly celebrate is that educators were instrumental in assuring the observation of Flag Day. A man called George Bouch, a kindergarten teacher in New York in eighteen eighty-nine, took up this as his cause and continually supported the effort. In eighteen eighty-six, Bernard Sigret, a great school teacher in Wisconsin, wrote an article in the Chicago Argus newspaper championing the national observation of Flag Day. And the superintendent of schools in eighteen ninety-three, Dr. Edward Brooks from Philadelphia, directed that Flag Day exercises for and by the children be conducted with patriotic songs and flags, and I think we're going to see those here in a few moments. The appearance of the flag, also known as Old Glory, and the Stars and Stripes, changed over the years as new states were added to the Union, as we all know, but the colors have remained the same: red for heartiness and valor, white for purity, and blue for loyalty; and thirteen stripes for the original thirteen colors, and fifty stars for each state. Some famous statements made about the flag are: John Philip Sousa said, it's one of my favorites, "The marches and everything, the red and white and starry blue are freedom's shield and hope." And Virginia Fox commented, "The American flag is the most recognized symbol of freedom and democracy in the world." We love and respect our country, we respect its flag, and champion the red, white, and blue. And now we have some guests who are going to come up from Citrus High School, I believe, and they're going to sing a couple of patriotic songs. And thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
And this is really special to us because they are on summer break.
Yes.
So thank you. But I know Mr. Dell's promised you all ice cream.
Thank you very much for inviting us here today. My name is John Adell, I'm the director of choir at Citrus High School, and these are some of my students, Jesse, Sophie, and Mary. Roman's our chorus department, and the three queens I'm sure you are familiar with. We're going to sing two songs for today, of course, the national anthems, who would ask us to stand and come out and sing about?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the peril thus spied O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. Our next song is actually written by a man named Greenwood, called God Bless the USA. I don't think I've listened to one again.
It's tomorrow, the day is too long I've worked for all my life Then I had to start again, for just my family got my sorry Ain't my lucky stars to be living here today? 'Cause the flag still stands for freedom, and they can't take that away! And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you, and defend what's still today. 'Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land, God bless the USA! From the lakes of Minnesota, to the hills of Tennessee Across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea, from Detroit down to Houston, and then New York to L.A. With this pride and heavy American heart, and it's time to make a change. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you, and defend what's still today. 'Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land, God bless the USA! And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you, and defend what's still today. 'Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land, God bless the USA!
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, and we can very well be proud of our students and our teachers.
Thank you so much.
May we stand in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kids, thank you again, that was so, so unheeded. Do they have a motion for adoption?
I agree with the agenda as recommended by superintendent.
Second.
Okay, excuse me, thank you. And there is a presentation from the A and the B. Other presentations will be in any need from the United States, or if they have a presentation.
Okay, I'll amend my adoption and include the presentation in the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, signed by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the agenda as amended to one edition of the space. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carries four zero. Citizens comments? May I have approval of the consent agenda?
Who should approve the consent agenda? Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, signed by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carries four zero. May I have a recognition donation, please, gentlemen?
We have several donations on the agenda for today. A five hundred dollar donation to the Future Technical College from Ladies Exili of Abbott Francis Stoller Council of sixty-one sixty-eight Nice Columbus. A four thousand dollar donation to the Future Technical College for Lori Carpenter. A seven hundred and fifty dollar donation to Reed Science Station for the Columbus Club of the Ministry for Scholarship Fund. A seven hundred and fifty dollar donation to Reed Science Station for Patrick and Patricia Brussel. A two thousand dollar donation to Hunter Saff's Elementary School from the Women of Sugar Mill Woods. And one thousand dollar donation to Christopher Miller School from Citrus County Education Foundation. A one thousand dollar donation to Full City Elementary School from Walz Carver Foundation.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for the donations of the school system. Next, Amy Peck.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon. Last year, the United Way gave Citrus High School ten thousand dollars to help students in our community to improve their ACT scores. And that was a pilot program that ran all year last year. And with that, those students, the students who participated, have brought back a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in scholarships through the Florida Bright Futures Program and several other things. The United Way is really proud of this work. I'm here today joined by our vice chair, Buddy Grant, Commander Buddy Grant, and we are here to let you know that this year, we will be awarding Citrus High School twenty-five thousand dollars to expand this program for other students across the county. Citrus did such a great job with their staff, pulling in the curriculum and the way that they executed the program, so now we want to spread this around the county. We really feel like it's been so helpful to so many students. I know myself, I would not have gone to college without the Florida Bright Futures assistance. And I know there's a lot of families in Citrus that also fall into that same category. So United Way is really proud to continue expanding this program. Our goal is to see real lasting change in Citrus County, and we know that by assisting students, by going to college, that part of our goal will be realized. So we just wanted to share that great news with you, and to thank especially Debbie Stanley, who ran this whole program last year, and I know this year Laura Aguilera will be running the program and do such a great job with Debbie's guidance. But we're really excited to see how many more students we can help, and even how many more dollars we can bring. I think an investment of ten thousand dollars netting a hundred and eighty-six thousand is a great investment, and I know our donors will be really pleased. So thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Amy. Thanks so much. And next, we have a very special presentation, it's one of my favorites, thirty years.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mrs. Hibble, Mr. Mullin, and Mr. Bradshaw. It is my privilege and honor this afternoon to introduce you three young men from troop number four fifty-seven, who have all earned their Eagle, their rank of Eagle Scout. Our first, first young man is Ben Vandermark. Ben earned the rank of Eagle Scout on May sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, and was recognized at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor, of Honor on May twenty-first. Ben's service project was a beautification and rehabilitation of the Moving Mountains location in Hernando. Moving Mountains is focused on assisting those with developmental disabilities. Ben graduated Citrus High School, summa cum laude, and following high school, attended the College of Central Florida. With the completion of his associate's degree, he will then transfer to Florida Atlantic University. Congratulations, Ben. Ben, come on up and tell us a little bit about your project.
So my project was basically just a big beautification project for an organization called Moving Mountains. Their main building is in Hernando, and their, their organization is based around helping people who have developmental disabilities. Basically, I just took, like, I cleaned up outside their building and sealed, like, a wooden part of their building, and just made it all around just a better place to hang around and be at for the workers and the people who go to the help.
Our next young man is Trey Wade. Trey earned the rank of Eagle Scout on April eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, and was recognized at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on May twenty-first. His community service project was the creation of a rosary prayer walk at Our Lady of Fatima Catholic Church in Eberness. Trey graduated Citrus High School, magna cum laude, and after graduation, he plans to take the armed services vocational aptitude battery, or ASVAB, and auto-qualify for the Navy Nuclear Engineering Program. Congratulations, Trey.
So for my project, I did the rosary walk for Our Lady of Fatima Catholic Church, and basically, the reason I did this project is because the church has been a very major part of my life for a long time, eighteen years now, and they have given me so much, so I decided to give a little bit back. And how I did it, I got donations from the parishioners and went out, found some patio stones, laid them with the help of my awesome troop. You know what you did. And from there, I also set up some benches just for some of the elderly in the community to take a break, or for others to just sit at the mysteries if they needed to or wanted to. So, that's everything. My family is also here with me. I have my grandmother, Debbie, and my mother, Jennifer.
I have my mother here, Judy Vandermark.
Our final Eagle Scout is Parker Murphy. Parker earned the rank of Eagle Scout on May sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, and was recognized at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on May twenty-first. Parker's service project incorporated geocaching and modern type of treasure hunting with GPS technology with historic Eagle Scout service projects. Parker graduated Citrus High School, magna cum laude, and will be attending Florida Polytechnic University in the fall studying computer science. Congratulations, Parker.
So, if you don't know either of them, which I would be kind of shocked, because I think half the people in this room know who my parents are. My, my mom and dad are John and Trina Murphy. So for my project, I, I set up several geocaches at old Eagle Scout locations, and what geocaches are, are, it's like a GPS treasure hunt, and you go online, you find court, you get these coordinates, you put them in there, in your GPS, you go out there, and you find these, like, these little or large objects, they could be like an ammo canister, or like a pill bottle, that have, like, little trinkets in them, like jacks and marbles and things like that, and you trade out these things for other, for other things that you have, like a slinky or something. So I put, so I put, I put about six of these at various locations throughout Citrus County and one in the canto. Well, wait, that's, never mind. Mostly Eberness, actually. So, yeah, that was my project, and I'm setting up a, a little kiosk about geocaching at the, the Welcome Center in Chris River.
The three Eagle Scouts will be up, and then after that, we'll have the parents who have lived in the technical college. Grandparents. Yeah, sorry, grandparents. Does not mean my vacation planning. Wayne King? And so? Okay. And this is the making a difference board?
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Hibble, Mr. Mullin. Today, we're presenting an award to Mr. Wayne King, and I'd just like to read a very brief synopsis that I have written to the superintendent. In nineteen eighty-five, Wayne King obtained his FDLE General Instructor Certification, which enabled him to teach law enforcement and correctional officer curriculums, both at an agency level as well as at an academy level for the state of Florida. In nineteen eighty-six, Wayne joined the Criminal Justice Academy at Wifecuji Technical Institute at the time, as an adjunct instructor, teaching correctional officer classes. During his tenure at the sheriff's office, where she was also employed since nineteen eighty-one, he became a leading expert at the sheriff's office and the Criminal Justice Academy when it came to a breath test operator course. Since that time, Wayne has dedicated countless hours of his personal and professional life to the BTO program. Wayne has helped direct best practices, as well as policies and procedures for the program, not only at a local level, but at the state level as well. Through his dedication, Wayne became the face of the BTO program, and was always willing to help former students, law enforcement, and correctional agencies with any issues that may arise. Wayne has certified hundreds of breath test operators over the years, and his passion and knowledge always comes through with his students. On May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, after thirty-five and a half years of service, Wayne King retired from the Citrus County Sheriff's Office in the Florida retirement system. I would like to thank Wayne for his dedication and performance over the last thirty years as an adjunct instructor for Wifecuji Technical College, and I wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you, Wayne.
I would just like to say, on behalf of the school system, we appreciate, we want to thank you for your many, many years, thirty-five years of service. And he was a high school graduate from Chris River High School. And, you know, it's always exciting for us, because we love when students graduate, come back, and truly make a difference in our system. So thank you, Wayne, for all your service. Thank you.
Just real quick for that Wayne, Wayne, we also had a certificate appreciation from the Academy, and just to read it very quickly, in honor of your thirty years of outstanding performance and dedication to the students and staff at the Criminal Justice Academy presented to Wayne King for thirty years of service, nineteen eighty-six to twenty sixteen. Thank you, Wayne.
There's a slip line in that one.
We do have a presentation coming up, and it's at five o'clock certain, from the Educational Foundation. Is anyone from the foundation here? Then we'll move on to Mr. Mullin, please.
Dr. Geddes. We have a request for the board for the next purchase of the iPads, that will be part of our one-to-one initiative. Dr. Geddes is going to come up and answer any questions the board may have, and bring you up to date on where we are in the process of that following our technology plan.
And as Dr. Geddes was moving forward now here, you know, as a reminder to the board, and I know everyone who knows this, but it's also a reminder to the public, that when we talk about our one-to-one initiatives, that we have many state mandates, but the one-to-one, fifty percent of our instruction dollars must be spent on digital learning, and also there is an initiative that all our students will receive a one-to-one device with the timeline. So Dr. Geddes will also address when we do come back, based on time, and how we're going to put some of the information together.
All right, good afternoon. I was actually going to try this document camera, it probably hasn't been used in quite a while. It's like it's going to work, but basically, what I have up here is the implementation schedule as, as we had it planned. And so you'll see that we started our pilot a few years ago at Citrus Springs Middle School, and then according to plan, we've been expanding our implementation, and as of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, grades four, five, six, seven, and eight, and nine have devices. And as of 2015, 2016, grades four, five, six, seven, and eight, and nine have devices. When it came, the plan then for 2016, 17 was to equip the rest of our high school classes with devices, which would get us to approximately 75% of our students having devices. So with that said, we have some capital funding challenges that we're all aware of. And so we revised our plan coming to you as part of our capital budget presentation. We cut it back by two-thirds. And so rather than roughly 3750 devices for ninth, 10th, I mean 10th, 11th, and 12th, we cut it back to 10th grade only. And then I have a 10-year projection, I've kind of gone over this briefly when we did our capital presentation, so I won't do it again. But basically, it shows that 16, 17, then with our kind of revised plan, would address 10th grade, then 17, 18, 11th grade, and 18, 19, 12th grade. So by pulling back and reducing that by two-thirds, we're saving roughly a million dollars or a little bit over in capital for the 16, 17 school year. I will tell you that, you know, we had a lot of discussion about how to move forward and why we should move forward, even with a reduced plan, even though it wasn't, you know, 10th, 11th, and 12th. But we have ninth-grade students moving from, you know, up to 10th grade. These students now have been using a tablet device in their instructional experience for really a few years by this time. So we really felt like it was doing those incoming 10th graders a disservice by saying we're not going to provide them a device that they've had access to now for a few years. We're seeing what I would call not really evolutionary, but what I would say revolutionary changes in classrooms with these digital devices. And it really relates to things like digital workflow. We have students now that are used to turning in work electronically, having those teachers review that work, and return it back to those students with comments or grades or whatnot electronically. And then I will just remind all of us that, you know, what is driving this, and Mrs. Hemmels alluded to it, we really have a mandate to transition to digital content or digital curriculum from the state of Florida. And so Justin, someone asked me, are we using digital curriculum? And my answer is certainly we are. And I can just give you an example. You may or may not be aware, but for our middle school students this coming year, 16, 17, they are going to be 100% digital in math and 100% digital in their English Language Arts adoption. Now, I'll remind you, we adopted those subjects in previous years, but from the get-go, we did that with devices in mind. And so we purchased at that time what was called a digital transition package. That was the curriculum package offered by the publisher that we purchased. And so basically, that, this is a five-year adoption. Basically, for English Language Arts, we said first two years are going to be digital and print, and then beginning three, year three, it would be digital only. And so that's becoming a reality in 16, 17. Now, without going overboard and asking for more than you want, I can just tell you that roughly, right now, overall, between 44 and 45% of our students have devices, okay? And that includes fourth and fifth grade. Thirty-one percent roughly have devices at elementary level, 100% have devices at the middle school level, 25% of students have devices currently at the high school level. And so by moving forward with this reduced plan of adding 10th grade this coming year, that will bring our overall total of approximately 53% of our students having devices. It's not the 75 that was on that original plan, but it is moving in the right direction. So with that background, I would just ask if you have any questions. So what you have on the agenda for approval today is basically asking to purchase devices for 10th grade students and actually for K-3 teachers that are the only remaining group of our teacher population that doesn't have devices.
And this is, as Mike mentioned earlier, this is a scaled-back plan from what we originally started with, and that's primarily scaled back due to concerns we have with the capital budget right now, which is what funds the devices. So we have scaled it back to about a third of what we planned on doing.
So we'll have 50% of our high schoolers have to reapprove this, so thereabouts?
53%. Yeah, 53.
Ninth and 10th grade. And Scott Hebert's here. If you have any questions regarding the elementary, Mike or I can answer any question.
I've got a question. So Dr. Geddes, you know, there is a concern, obviously, with capital funding that we have, and you've gone to, we're going to go to the public for tax referendum. But my question for you is this, if we were to postpone this until after August because of the concerns of funding, what is your estimation on the timeline if we were to wait until September or October to make a purchase, depending on the vote in the public? How long would it take to implement those devices?
It could honestly be December. There's a lot of preparation that happens with those devices prior to them going, you know, to the hands of students. A lot of that preparation is taking place even right now over the summer timeframe. Somebody like Mrs. Mason could probably talk about logistics, oh, she's gone actually, logistics at the school level better than myself, but it, I would venture to say it would only, almost make those devices unusable for that population.
Well, in the high school level, it would mean that an entire semester of students would be lost because by the time those are deployed, that semester's over, and those students are going to be then into another semester. You know, we need to remember, if we're going to start doing that, we need, there's a lot then we're going to have to start scaling back capital-wise. The first thing is, is then what we need to tell students is we're not going to provide them textbooks, because that's what we're doing. These are digital textbooks. And this is part of significant scale-back. I have significant reservations as to how we, with the concern of scaling it back as we are. We initially were going to implement at an elementary and high school level. I think that initially then the change was to go to a high school level. I think that was appropriate because one of the greatest needs right now for career and tech, I mean, for career and college experience has been the one-to-one. We are, I believe, disenfranchising some students, but we don't have a choice because right now we do have a capital challenge. But my concern is, then what are we going to start doing? Stopping purchasing of textbooks? Are we going to stop purchasing desks when we need them? This has been part of our budgeting plan. This has been part of the needs of our district. And if we're going to start scaling that back, then we have some significant things that we're going to have to do. I cannot imagine what would be the advantage of doing that at this point, but I can see a lot of disadvantages as we move forward. Keep in mind that I, and I am very supportive of the administration, I'm sorry, the executive staff and Dr. Geddes of saying, we're going to pull back to 10th grade. And I think that it's very admirable to have put that plan in operation. I have eighth graders contacting me saying, what are we going to do? This is how we learn, this is how we communicate, this is how we do our schoolwork. And you're asking us to go back in time to a time that that's not how we operate. We're hurting their career and their college experience, I believe, moving forward, and that concerns me. And again, it is a state mandate. I know, Board, you've read some of my articles this week. This is again, unmedited, a unfunded mandate that this state has brought down on us. And what they have done is prioritized again assessments over curriculum. Because, and I just would have concerns if this board were to go down a road of scaling back more than what we are.
Thomas, I was thinking about this last night, and I thought it compares to teaching driver's education on a horse.
Well, well, no, that's well said.
You know, one thing I'll add that I didn't mention earlier, that thing's pretty significant from the curriculum standpoint. I'm told that high schools are really dependent on tablets, the iPads, for intensive reading for this coming year. I don't know if it's the same program that was discussed earlier, but I think it might be this USA Test Prep, which does formative assessment, very successful at Citrus High School, and they want to expand that to other schools as well. The iPad's an integral part of that, and so that was part of their strategy to address the needs in the intensive reading area, was using that ninth and 10th grade level. So that was another.
And I know elementary teachers right now, and I'm glad that we're providing them, the K3s, with devices. That goes along with the methodology that we have learned, and that is to equip those educators in advance of having those deployment of iPads or of one-to-one devices. But the K-12, the K-3 teachers will tell you right now that they are having challenges preparing their students for the curriculum, as well as preparing them for the writing that they need to be doing, because they don't have those devices. That's just unfortunately the constraints we're under. I think that, you know, we have done, we know in this state and in this nation that we are revered for the work that we've done. But we have to go back to the big thing that we've talked about. We are a community of economically disadvantaged children. We have often had to have a responsibility to ensure that our students have the best tools and our teachers have the best tools if these students are going to be successful. And our data shows that we are one of the most successful districts in sending our students onto post-secondary education. So I support the direction of going to 10th grade, and I'm excited about it.
Dr. Geddes, in reference to the 10th grade teachers and the digital workflow, have they, there's an expectation then from the 10th grade teachers, I mean, they are aware that the administration has recommended the purchase of these iPads, is that right? So they will be instituting full implementation and use of those this next semester?
That's our goal. I can say that the middle school teachers have had a longer opportunity to kind of familiarize themselves with that tool and the electronic tool, eBackpack, is what we're using for that digital workflow. So I won't say that beginning of the school year, your 10th grade teachers are going to be 100% up to speed in that whole process, but they need the tool to get up to speed in that process, so.
Our students are the ones that actually are further advanced than our teachers.
I hope that answers your question, so.
Can you interest the Digital Learning Day we have set up for our staff?
Yeah, we have had a previous Digital Learning Day. We have another one set for August the 6th, is that the date, I believe? And basically, these tools are going to be the focus of that day, just like they were in the past, very, very successful. Oh, August the 2nd, okay. So, you know, they're going to be looking at those workflow tools, eBackpack. We have subject area and curriculum representatives coming in, you know, from the instructional materials that we have adopted. And so they're going to be training those teachers directly on the digital component, you know, with those instructional materials adoptions that we already have. So we're putting a lot of emphasis on teacher training and helping them become familiar with those.
But now, they won't have the new iPads in hand for that training, though, will they already propose having?
The teachers, all the high school teachers already have iPads in their hands.
Okay, well, no, but I'm saying this purchase. I mean, they can still have the training, even if.
Oh, yeah, they already have their iPads. We can still have that training.
The elementary teachers.
Yeah, the elementary teachers.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to, you know, in light of the impending financial crisis, the projections have shown, what would be the harm in waiting two months until we know what the voters say about education in Citrus County? I mean, this is something that I am concerned with, I know we all are, and I do understand the need for technology, adequate technology for students. And I would like to see us continue this process, this plan, which is something that, you know, the administration, Mrs. Hemmels, come up with a good plan to implement. I'm just, you know, in light of not being able to make a $3 million bond payment in five years, and the maintenance positions we have associated with that capital budget, and, you know, I'm just weighing this out, you know, because I do have some concern with the capital budget and the decisions that we will be making if the voters do not decide.
You say, my staff has always operated on the premise, and the direction from this board has always been, students were first, not materials, not buses, not maintenance, the students were first. So we scaled back the plan, but we kept students first, and this is devices for students. So that's the direction we've always been given by this board. When we budget and we plan, is whatever we cut, whatever we reduce, we keep in mind that students come first. So the iPad, for me, is for students, and it's putting students first. If there's, if we want to cut, we can look at cutting back on some of the maintenance we don't need to do, take care of the asphalt, don't seal the driveways. Those are kind of things then that we put off for two or three more years. But I think putting off the iPads is putting out, putting kids without a device. And I personally, from my perspective, don't think it's a very good idea.
And I think somehow, and I guess maybe Mr. God, I'm a little confused, because regardless of what the voters do, we're going to have to do this. That's not going to change. Whether the voters don't approve it or not, there'll need to be other changes. This isn't going to be one of, this is a mandate by the state to transition. It's not going to be an option. What will have to be an option is we're going to have to consider then other things. So I don't see this, I mean, this is, it's not even I don't see this, this is no different. Those are things. But you can't take the curriculum away from you. You're talking about taking textbooks. You're not talking about just some fun toy. This is their textbook. And that's, I think, one of the biggest differences. We have been saying that pervasively. That's one of the issues that I have with the, with the assessment technology, because the assessment technology is not curriculum. This is direct curriculum. And I think that we're hearing over and over, I'm pleased, we have over 200 teachers that will participate in that technology learning. We are benefiting greatly by what Citrus County has done, but make no mistake, this isn't an option. This is something we're going to have to do.
Well, the only option, though, Mr. Kennedy, is that if we don't have the money to do it, we can't spend money if we don't have it. And, you know, we've got a big option on this bond that we, you know, we owe that bond payment that goes through, what, 2026 or 2027? You know, and that's something that we've got to stay good on. So the board will have to decide if the revenues are not there, where the cuts will be made.
And they will have to be made, but they won't be able to be made in curriculum, unless we're, what we're saying is we plan on becoming a substandard educational district. And I don't think that this board is looking to do that.
I don't want to become substandard in maintenance either. I mean, we have a, we have to keep our buildings maintained and our schools in good order. And, you know, those are just the issues that we're going to face should the voters not pass a half-cent sales tax. I hope that we can get the message out there of why it's so important that we have that revenue source and in the age of technology, as we continue to grow, and this is Benetton A school district, that we would support, that the voters would support that. I'm just, you know, my concern is with that projection, those budget projections, is that financially prudent, it may not be financially prudent right now to purchase this equipment, but I'm not sure, Mr. Kennedy. I mean, I'm weighing these things out.
I will tell you, I think if we're looking at doing that, we need to put other stuff on the table. I would not put curriculum that has. I would not put curriculum as one of those items.
I'd like to interject for a minute. We've been through this before when we've had to face five to seven $10 million budget decreases, and we've had to look, we've brought things to the boards, and we've had to look at things such as cutting back a custodian at every school, cutting back a support person, which is now getting to the point, we thought we were getting to the point where we could start replacing some of these staff members. And if we get to the point where we cannot move forward with some of our capital projects, we'll have to look at our projects about, you know, delaying buses longer, like Mr. Mullin said, not resurfacing areas and those types of things. So those are the, those are the pieces that we would have to come back to the board and say, okay, here's our budget process, here's what we're going through, here's what we need to look at cutting. But in, in the district's opinion, the iPad's not one place that we can. Now, we may be able to slow it down as we have this year where, you know, we've got to cut back a fourth of it or a third of it where, you know, we're going into 10th grade. And then, so we, you know, we may have to cut it back and do smaller increments, but everything we've got in our district based on the curriculum, the textbooks, the digital learning, and the iPads, we've got a plan for every one of our students. So, and I get the part about the voters, but I will agree, Mr. Kennedy, on one thing, whether that sales tax goes through or not, these iPads are going to have to be purchased and given out to our students, and it may be a different time frame.
Right. Well, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, you did cut back from the budget from, you know, not presenting to the board the full amount, which, how much was that full amount?
1.5 million.
1.5 million.
So we reduced that 500,000.
Yeah, so right now, and that's, and that's, me as one vote, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, at least there has been some things taken into consideration, and I wholeheartedly agree with that decision, so. But, you know, I just wanted to know because we've got our teachers out there, if they're preparing for it. I know the students, this group that's going into 10th grade have had iPads since, what grade, sixth grade? Is that, have they had iPads?
This group has had it since sixth grade.
Since sixth grade, so this group.
They don't know any different for the last number of years.
And that would be, you know, could be a step backwards if we do not provide them with that iPad. And so that's something that I've, you know, I'm trying to.
And Mr. Dodd, and I know you know this, especially because you have a daughter, right in the middle of this, this timeframe, you know, whether a student is, the struggle of Dr. Gettys is dealt, why we have looked at trying to do all the way through 12th grade is, what is a junior? Because in some classes, they're, they're taking sophomore classes, in other classes they're taking, you know, they're, it's not as, it's more fluid than it is clean in middle school. And that's still going to be a challenge. And I know that that's something that Mr. Mullin has been concerned with, that the high school administrators are concerned with. I think this seems to be about the least that we can do and still not go backwards for our students. I am concerned as to where we're going to be a year from now when we really had expected to be implementing K through 3, and we're going to be hopeful at this point. Now, God willing, if this passes, we'll have good problems to have, but I am concerned if it doesn't pass, Mr. Dodd, where we're going to be in a year.
So, Mr. Mullin, in reference to the projection now, when we looked at those figures, we had projected the 1.5 million that was in the figure. So in reality, we are, we are not spending a million of that, we're only spending a half million. Is that?
We're spending a third of what we budgeted, what we projected.
We have it, yeah.
So we've cut back two-thirds that we did not spend. And I, I appreciate bringing it up for discussion because I think it's important that the public understand that, you know, that it's, what's all linked to this, this need for capital funding and how it does fill into the classroom and does impact students in the classroom. It's not just a, you know, on the surface, it's not just about buildings, but it gets much deeper than that. So I, I do appreciate the conversation, but Mr. Kennedy's correct when we've gotten to the point where because we've been mandated to do so, where we've become reliant on the devices for the curriculum. And even though not all of our teachers are there yet, that's the direction we're moving. And I fear if we stop and don't continue to at least move forward, but stop altogether, that we, we could potentially lose some of those teachers that we've had a hard time bringing forward into that, into that movement. Because it hasn't been easy all the way across the board. But, you know, we have made progress, we are ahead of where a lot of districts are. Dr. Gettys has provided excellent leadership in this, in this area, and, you know, I'm proud of where the district is at with the, with the initiative. And I think, you know, it's about how kids learn today, too. You know, when we think about the devices, some people may think these are luxury devices, but this is how kids in this generation learn. They don't, they don't learn traditionally like you and I learn, so we have to be able to, to deliver the content, the curriculum in a manner that's going to be engaging.
And, you know, we talk about, the one part is the learning and that piece, but the other part is the, the career readiness. We know, if you want, wanted to be a custodian at Oak Hill Hospital, you get your orders on an iPad. If you are entering into a fire, many times you're getting your orders through an iPad. It's, and it's not necessarily only an iPad, it's often a tablet device now is what has become the mobile device. And so I can tell you, one of our writers who writes for the paper, it's not uncommon to see them writing on their mobile device to do their, their writings. And I will tell you, we do not have trouble with the thumb writing completely with that. But that is, that has become not just college readiness now, but career readiness. So I, I am, I am grateful that this, this whole, this, this board, and that includes Mr. Dodd, so in case anybody's wondering, Mr. Dodd, I value so much when he brings up these things because he is, he is appropriately concerned over being fiscally responsible. And I just think that this is about curriculum, and we, we need to make sure that we do talk to the public to say, we've had to, again, we've gotten too good at cutting in this district. We're going to have to, again, cut. That's what we're doing right now. We're cutting $1 million out of our capital today. We're doing that, and it's going to impact students, it's going to impact teachers. Will we survive? We're going to survive it because we do have a plan, but we're always having to keep changing that plan, and that's not getting easier. It's not getting easier, but I want to thank Mr. Mullin's staff and the administrative team and Dr. Gettys. I know you know how I feel about you, but this hasn't been easy.
This is why I've got gray hair.
But you still have hair. Well, Kennedy, part of the, and I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, part of the issue is always because every school district in the state of Florida survives. And when the budget comes out, school districts get together, they cut on the backs of our teachers, our support staff, and on the kids. And we know that that's the money they're sending us, that's the money they allow us to put in our budget, and we still perform. So they sit up in Calhasy and say, well, look, they don't need the money anyway because they're still doing what they need to do, not realizing everybody's doing double time of everything they should be having to do. So we get it, we know that, we're hoping too that everything passes and that we can continue to afford it, so.
When we talked last week at our conference of training, one of the things that was remarkable for our other districts was, okay, I don't get it. You have no additional monies, you have no additional voter referendum at this moment, you've implemented one of the most successful one-to-one transitions to digital, and you've cut over $40 million out of your budget over the last five years.
We've had, the state's had it.
But we've had to adjust, and they say, I, they're concerned for us because they know how tough it is for districts to accomplish what they're doing. And I'm, I'm glad to serve with this team of, of individuals up here, but I, I would like the day to come soon when we are not spending most of our time cutting our budget, but managing our budget.
You know, Thomas, when I went to the ladies room about an hour ago, someone followed and cut on the light. Now, we have half the lights on, half the lights off to save money, so as soon as that person did that, well, they're not from Citrus County, they're not from the school system because they turned them on. We cut them off, and so we cut everything. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of Apple iPads for the one-to-one initiative as stated.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the purchase of Apple iPads for the one-to-one initiative. Further discussion?
Yes, I appreciate the discussion we've had. I know we want to be fiscally responsible, and I do see that this is a scaled-back plan from the 1.5 million and just get by, I think, with a plan to continue implementing technology and so doing, bringing about the 10th grade. So I appreciate the district's plan of action, and I do appreciate, too, that this does not, we're not trying to bite off the whole piece because, you know, I just wanted to have that discussion on 500,000, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, then, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie's four, zero. Thank you.
It's just another reason why I value this board so much.
It's 5:00 o'clock, we have someone from Duke Energy and Educational Foundation here. It's the Educational Foundation versus Duke Energy. Oh, theirs too.
I'm straight to the beach after this. Good afternoon. Thank you again for having us. As, as you all know, my name is Steve Marbury, I'm the current Executive Director of the Citrus County Education Foundation, and I am here today to recognize a partner, a business partner in our local community as well as throughout the state of Florida in the southeast in local education and education initiatives. With us today is Dorothy Purnue, the Government and Community Relations Manager for Duke Energy here in Citrus County as well as some of our surrounding counties. And she is here to present the district and through the Education Foundation with some checks and some money to support some of our local initiatives. Before I get into those direct items, I just wanted to say that since 2013, Duke has given over $350,000 through the Education Foundation to the Citrus County School District alone. This includes a $10,000 grant for WTC to build a small robotics lab, and an $80,000 grant for a district after-school STEM program for the 2014-15 school year. You all maybe recall that. Last year, they gave $34,000 through the Education Foundation for several initiatives as well as an additional $13,000 to support field trips for fifth graders to go to the Duke Energy Plant. This year in 2016, Duke has awarded, Duke Energy Foundation has awarded the Citrus County Education Foundation with a grant of $34,054 to support three educational initiatives. The first initiative is a LaCanto Primary School Makerspace Project. And if you have visited our middle schools and our elementary schools, have probably no doubt heard about these new ideas and these new reutilization of the library space to turn it into a makerspace. So now as students are reading on their iPads, reading in the classroom, repurposing that space to do STEM-related activities, hands-on activities. In the case of LPS, it'll include electricity kits, technology kits, construction kits. There are plans to take the money Duke has given in other funding areas and buy a 3D printer and other type things. So students will be encouraged to come and work in groups and work in a community session, setting in the library to build things and to get hands-on STEM experience. So Duke, one of their funding initiatives is STEM and college and workplace readiness in the STEM area. So this is a wonderful, new, innovative idea that LaCanto Primary School brought to the Education Foundation, and we made this request through Duke on their behalf, and that will be $3,972 to get that Makerspace Project there off the floor. The second project is the Foundation for Success Mini Grants. As you all may be aware of that program, I'm sure I've mentioned it to you a few times. Last year, we were able to give over $101,000 in grants to local teachers. This year, Duke is upping their contribution in that area from $2,500 last year to $18,250, which will guarantee us at least 70 additional grants this year when it's matched dollar for dollar through the DOE. So over $37,000, or $38,000 worth of grant funding for our teachers. With the Duke Suncoast and Black Diamond Foundation's contributions in this area, even though we won't know the total amount, we are already, we already have the monies on hold and restricted to give over $65,000 in grants this year, and we're continuing to build towards giving even more and more grants. That, again, is both literacy-based grants as well as STEM grants, their classroom or teacher team grants, and if you haven't seen those projects or gone to our night where we award the teachers that grant money, I'd really encourage you this year to get out there and see all the teachers and hear about all the amazing projects that they've done with this $500,000 to $1,000. The final project, which we are very excited to have Duke Energy onboard with, is an early reading initiative. To kind of give you the history on this program, we began in approximately 2011 with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program that was brought to our board as a joint endeavor with United Way to provide books in the hands of early readers, in that case from birth up until their entry into kindergarten. Unfortunately, United Way, within the first month or so of implementing the program, pulled out and removed the agreement to provide 50% of the funding in that. So though it was a successful program, the cost of the program became prohibitive rather quickly, and we were not able to fully implement it the way we wanted with the program costing over $180,000 over a three-year period. So we, at that time, still were very encouraged about the early reading initiatives, wanted to make sure it was a platform of the Education Foundation. And with the support of Ms. Hemmel and with our assistant, our Vice President at the time, Eric Head, who's the head of the regional library, we developed and designed what's called the First Library Initiative. This is a early reading program that targets our pre-kindergarten students at the time, and through six coordinated read-ins throughout the year, we go into the classrooms, we read to these students. Each student is provided a copy of the book, does a lesson plan with the book, and we build these students, most of which are already socioeconomic indicators at or below the poverty level, with a home library to continue to read and encourage that early reading. With Duke's grant this year of $11,832, we'll be able to expand that pre-K program into kindergartens now. So now, this year, for 2016-17, every kindergartner in this county will get three read-end dates and be provided with three specifically targeted books for their reading age, age level. So they will be, we will be purchasing over 3,480 books this year that will go into the hands of our students, all thanks to Duke and their, they're really getting momentum behind this program and wanting to be a part of it, expand it, to be even bigger and better. So now this year, at pre-kindergarten, we'll have six read-ins, and at kindergarten, we'll have three read-ins. So we're always looking for readers, we would encourage you all to take part in that. And, you know, we do bring in, we work with the Education Director for Elementary and others to select the proper books, make sure that we have the right curriculum and make sure we're getting the most out of every dollar spent. So we've taken that inspiration that Superintendent Hemmel and others brought with Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and we've developed our own program that we think has a greater impact for a fraction of the price, and we are very happy that Duke has come onboard to be a part of that project. And then getting back, again, the field trips, there was a remaining balance from last year's grant. Last year, this past school year, we had 667 students and 64 teachers visit the Duke Energy Plant from fifth grades across the county. This year, Scott Hebert and the Toses will be developing a full curriculum plan to go along with that. And our hopes is to have the fifth graders every year looking forward to this trip, much like the Marine Science Center, much like some of the other scheduled trips we have. So the $8,300 left over in that budget will be rolled forward. So all of the transportation costs, all of the substitute students, any, any cost, Duke provides the lunches while the students are out there, will be fully paid for so that it will cost the school district absolutely nothing, cost the students absolutely nothing to get this great experience, see this amazing facility we have right here, unique to our county. So without further ado, in a long lead-up, I would like to thank Dorothy, thank the Duke Energy family, and say the Education Foundation is very impressed with their commitment and their ongoing. their ongoing, really, really, I mean, Sam knows, you can pick up the phone and call Dorothy or call them, really just their excitement and energy for the education system here in Citrus County. So thank you, Dorothy. Would you like to say anything at this time?
A couple of words. Thank you so much. It's really our privilege and pleasure to partner with Education Foundation as well as the Citrus County School System to, you know, two of our primary focus areas are STEM and early childhood literacy and by being able to support the mini-grants and their first library, the makerspace, it's just a perfect fit for who we are as an organization. In the state of Florida, this year, we were able to contribute $1 million in grants for education. And then think of the matching grant, the impact that that's going to have on school systems around. And, you know, having it here in my backyard in Citrus County, you know, being able to provide that to your, to your students and to the teachers is really just appropriate. Thank you for the opportunity to partner with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could have Sam or a few of you come down, I think we'd like to get some photos. Or if you guys want to stand up in the background, I think she has some science to hold on.
We want some. We have a literacy chalkboard. We have a STEM chalkboard. We have a mini-grant chalkboard.
I have a mini-grant.
And then we have the guest.
We have a big check. Sam gets a big check. We get the big check.
I don't want to block. No, you're fine. I just want to.
You guys got a picture?
Our pleasure.
Okay. Love the child.
I like the field trips. I think that's going to be outstanding for career options and exposure. That's just great. Thank you.
Yeah, they do get a really good variety of, from working at Kohl's or at all the different plant managers.
Yeah, I've spoken with several people. I think it's just great because you don't have to be a nuclear engineer to work there. They really have everything from, you know, Janet, absolutely, you know, accounting departments, everything that you would go out and get into education and come back to Citrus County and have some work. I did want to update the board while I was here. I will be doing a full quarterly update next month on the budget issues and everything. If there is any questions at this time, though, I know you all are going through your budget season, but please let me know and I'll be sure to get you any information. We did approve at our meeting last week, was our annual meeting, 19,000 towards the Alex program, so providing the software. I want to thank David Rowland and his department for getting us a lot of great feedback and quantitative numbers from last year. As you recall, we paid for that program last year for each of the high schools to have. And so we got great numbers and the improvement in end-of-course exams for Algebra I, just for students who utilize this program was staggering. And it was great to see that the program was being implemented. We always love to see it being used a little more. So hopefully this year with the 19,000, more and more students, more teachers get used to using this program and help pass that EOC for Algebra I, which we know is such a critical test. We also agreed or approved up to $10,000 for the Welcome Back, the Digital Learning Day that was discussed just a minute ago, so that we can ensure that all the teachers are fed and the program date goes off without a hitch.
I think Mr. Dodd wanted to ask you a question, something you said.
Yeah, well, it was dealing with the, I wanted an update on the job search for your replacement.
Oh, okay.
So we did elect new officers as well as approved the hiring of a new Executive Director at the meeting. Our new Executive Director, starting as of effective date of first, will be Shonda Burdette.
Right.
So Shonda and I will be here next month to, you know, do the proverbial handing over of the torch and maybe I'll have a chalkboard with a torch drawn on it and I hand it to her. So our President will be Linda Rogers, replacing from Suncoast Credit Union, Vice President Amy Barbiere, Secretary as a new Board Member, Maureen Suma, and corresponding Secretary will be Kathy Pomposelli this year. So that's our full slate of officers. I will be not taking a board position at this time until I can reanalyze my schedule and figure out, I don't want to commit to it, but I'll still be involved. And of course, my wife will remain as a member. But we do have exciting new members coming onboard. The momentum's still there and I don't have the 40 million that I know we've gone behind, but if we can get it, we'll continue.
You guys should have.
Thank you. And I also wanted to say, I skipped over on the Duke Energy. There's also a $5,000 grant through Duke, hopefully coming through in August for Rock Crusher Elementary is doing a STEAM after-school program. So it's STEM, but they're adding an arts element to it as well. So in addition to the engineering, the mathematics, the tutoring that will be going on, they're also going to have guitar lessons and creative arts aspects to it as well. So that'll be an after-school program that affects approximately 75 fourth and fifth graders and Dorothy is, will be receiving that grant hopefully this week and hopefully we should have that funded by August as well. So again, thank you and thank you for your time. And if you need anything, as always, please let me know. Otherwise, I will see you next month.
Okay, thank you very much. The first. I did. 5:15. Citizen comments. Just hold one second. Yes, ma'am. Are there any comments? Anyone sign the green card? Okay, it is. So you can say. Good afternoon. I am here to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Golden Rod. And we have quite a long Golden Rod today.
A lot of these are, I'm assuming, people that are on drop that get reviewed?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have several on there. We hold a lot of those and a lot of our new teachers. So far, we've hired clear drug test, fingerprint and everything, 33 new teachers at this time.
How many? That brings up the question. I know we often sometimes ask you, do we know how many positions we have open?
Yes.
Instructional, non-instructional?
Yes. At the elementary, we have at this time posted 20 instructional and five support. At the middle school, we have six instructional and seven support posted. At the high school, we have 12 instructional and four support posted. And then at our other schools, which would be AES, Marine Science Station, WTC, our ESE Department, we have eight instructional and we have six support posted.
Do it just one more time, just a little slower.
Yes. Okay. At the elementary school, or at the elementary schools, we have 20 instructional and five support. At the middle school, we have six instructional and seven support. At the high school, we have 12 instructional posted and four support. And at other, our other departments and our other schools, we have eight instructional and six support posted. We always hire around 100 teachers. So we've still got 60 more. We have some that are being processed right now at this time.
Some of those, yeah, some of those openings could be in the process of being closed.
Do you happen to know maintenance, you know, that, or maybe we don't have any?
We do not. We have one system support specialist at TRC posted and the other five positions are through the ESE Department.
So I know from other districts that they've been, there's continued to be a challenge for bus drivers. I know last week in Tampa, we, I was in a transportation work group. And so are we saying there's only six support or these support positions at the different levels part of those bus drivers?
With bus drivers, we hire them as substitutes first. So we are processing substitute bus drivers. We're processing several each week because I review the application and references. So we are processing those. And as positions open up, Maryland hires them full-time for those positions.
It's still an area that we're concerned about and still having a, because we need to have several subs to cover absenteeism and that's the area where we're lacking. We spent the greater part of last year with mechanics driving, route managers driving, supervisors driving buses. So we were able to fill those. So it continues to be a challenge for us. We have a training session that goes on in the summertime. So we have our own training program. As they graduate from that, we get them to the, into a substitute bus role. And then as they get experience, they apply for full-time routes. The way we have the contract we have with the Teamsters, when a route comes open, we have to have a certain amount of time where existing drivers can improve and apply bid for that first. So that means we, we really don't know what route that substitute or new employee is going to get. It takes a little while for that to trickle in. So that's the agreement that we have.
Okay, but, but it looks like you're doing pretty well. I mean, there's a challenge, but there's.
We're keeping our head, our nose right at the water level. We're not too far above it. Right at the water level when it comes to bus drivers. It's a challenge. But we are, you're right. We are, we're making it work.
We are pushing for legislation for all coordinators to be able to. And we, we're out there one time and a few, it was a long time ago, got under the wheel and we were not invited back. I'll tell you that. That's a hard job. I need to approve the instructional support recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Dodd to approve the instructional and support recommendation. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'm asking approval for Ladonna K. Harper to be named Principal of Inverness Primary School effective July 1, 2016.
I make a motion to approve Ladonna K. Harper as the principal of Inverness Primary School by all the law, effective July 1, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve Ladonna K. Harper, Principal at Inverness Primary School effective July 1, 2016. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. The next item is to ask for approval of Witlicuji Technical College Part-Time Salary Scale Change for the 2016-2017 school year.
I move to approve Witlicuji Technical College Part-Time Salary Scale 2016-2017.
Second. Enthusiastically.
Really, yes. It's been, I'm sorry.
This does not impact our budget. This is, this is funded through the Education.
Right.
So it does not impact our budget.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve Witlicuji Technical College Part-Time Salary Scale Change for 2016-2017. All in, I'm sorry.
And I just want to say, because I know we all get this big, you know, they have to operate like a business. And if they don't have classes, they don't have instructors. So I'm grateful that we're doing this and I think it's, it's not long overdue, but it's time. So I'm good.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'm asking approval of the appointment of the administrative personnel for the 2016-2017 school year. I have an amended copy that I will hand you and I would also like to add John Mullin's name as the new Coordinator of Research and Accountability.
I, well, you're describing that. I make a recommendation that we approve the appointments of administrative personnel for 2016-2017.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms.
As amended.
As amended. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
A lawyer over here saying. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by whom? By Ms. Bryant to approve the appointment of administrative personnel for 2016-2017. As amended.
And Ms. Himmel, I just want to thank you for, you know, I don't, Mr. Mullin, Mr. John Mullin doesn't always, he doesn't have a job that's, that's out there, that's as visible as maybe our administrators are sometimes seen and some of our teachers. But the value that he does to teachers in the classroom, I know I, I have a wife that often depends on him to provide that information so that students can be successful. And looking at some of our scores, as we've broken them down this week, they're quite impressive. And John is behind so much of that data.
Well, we also looked at all of our departments and that's only department that we didn't have. A director coordinator and supervisor, so all that.
And comparatively to other districts, we are still very, very under in that department. So I'd like to continue operating. I'm sorry, sir.
No, no, I'm just, I didn't mean to cut you off. I wanted to ask the Superintendent for an update on the La Canto High Principal and Assistant Principal positions that are vacant as well as the Inverness Primary Assistant Principal. Those jobs were posted. The posting was closed. We have, in the process of setting up interviews, Mr. Rowland, Dr. Geddes and myself will interview with three teachers from La Canto High School on the 23rd of June, all day long. And we will make a recommendation to the Superintendent after those interviews. And then hopefully that new principal will then interview for the Assistant Principal job. But we went ahead and got the posting done so they can step right in and go into the interview process. We'll be all ready for them to do it. We'll screen and do that, get that all ready for them. We're obviously going to have the principal in place prior to the start of the school year. We'll have him in place prior to July. And second of all, the principal is going to have the ability to interview for their Assistant Principal. Absolutely. We're just, we're just doing all the preliminary work for them so they can hit the ground running. Okay, that sounds good. And then that Assistant Principal position at Inverness Primary, that same way it's been. It has been posted. They are screening, getting ready to screen for that. We had a large number of applicants. The interview team, Mr. Hebert will participate with the new principal and assist her through that interview process and selecting an Assistant Principal. That'll be sometime in the near future as well. Next week. Next week. Very good.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Hebert, do you usually sit on those committees?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. And next, what? Almost 5:30. We have enough time, I guess, for the next one. Do we stop? The next request is to seek approval of the appointment of instructional personnel for the 2016-2017 school year. Again, this list will grow every year as teachers that move from probationary to annual contract.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of instructional personnel for 2016-2017.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Ms. Bryant to approve the appointment of instructional personnel for 2016-2017. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. Yeah, we have, we can do the next one. Okay. Next request is to seek approval of the appointment of the support personnel for the 2016-2017 school year.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve appointment of support personnel for 2016-2017. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. Next. Asking approval of the instructional personnel for summer school for 2016.
Move approval of instructional personnel for summer school 2016.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Bryant to approve instructional personnel for summer school 2016. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Next. Last, to ask approval of support personnel for summer school for 2016.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve support personnel for summer school 2016. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. Just a quick reminder before I step down, July 27th, Wednesday, July 27th, is new teacher orientation at 8:00 in the morning. And we look very forward to seeing you. We will send you an email and a follow-up email.
Don't just step down. That's not funny to even joke with.
Step away.
Is that going to be?
Wednesday.
Superside?
Yes, it will be at Citrus High School.
Send out the weekly updates on the personnel, the status of those jobs.
Yes, I will send weekly updates on the status of how many positions we have open. Absolutely. Thank you.
What's the time again for 27?
Breakfast, 7:30 to 8:00 a.m. and then we will start at 8:00 a.m. And we look forward to you being there.
We'll be there.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the minutes. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, carries four zero. Thank you. I don't think we have time to move the Inverness. We have a, oh, sorry. Do you want to make your announcement?
Do you want me to?
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, a minute.
Pursuant to Florida Statute 286.011, print A, closed print, I'd like to call an attorney-client executive conference to gain advice concerning pending litigation between the Citrus County School. School Board and TC individually on behalf of JV, case number 515-CV-5-OC-30PRL. Such a matter of the meeting shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Meeting will be held on June 28, 2016, at 9:05 a.m. Persons present will be R. Wesley Bradshaw and Terry Harmon, attorneys for the Citrus County School Board. Mr. Harmon may appear telephonically because he resides in Tallahassee. Superintendent Sanders, Sam Hemel, board members Virginia Bryan, Thomas Kennedy, Linda Powers and Doug Dodd. Reminder, the entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter and no portion of the meeting shall be off the record. Outside of that, I have nothing for legal matters.
Okay, thank you very much. Now it's 5:30, time for a public hearing. Is someone going to come to the podium?
Not public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Should we recess to regular meetings?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we'll recess to regular meetings. I'm glad you have our attorney here to remind us and hold it open to public meetings. Oh, no, no, no. It's a public hearing. The first thing on the agenda is approve the 2016-17 Code of Student Conduct.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the 2016-17 Code of Student Conduct. What?
Go ahead. And just to make everyone aware, that the one that was, is sitting here was not the one that was approved for advertising. The one that was approved for advertising did not contain the additions that on page four, page four, paragraph eight, pages 28 and 29. So what you're approving is the Code of Conduct without those additions. Those additions will come back on the 28th to move for advertising along with a few other new things that need to go into the Code of Conduct that the legislature is making us do. So just so you know that those, those sections are not being approved tonight, but this is the, without those, this is the Code of Conduct that John moved to advertise at the 24th meeting, I believe.
Will that make the printing, be able to make the printing do it now?
No, it will not.
Or it's like baggy pants, we'll have a...
Well, we're going to have to do an addendum to it, but hopefully with the way the time frames run, we should be able to advertise and have the public hearing about the same time that the students go back to school. So we should be able to give them the Code of Conduct with the addendum at the same time.
Board members, I don't know if you all have gotten calls, but I know I've gotten calls after the article in the Chronicle ran, I think it was today, because I got them this morning, where parents, some parents were, and the public misunderstood with regard to the standing of the pledge. And I just want to make sure that we've clarified, this is not a change that this board is doing because we are wanting to do it. This is a legislative change that came about from House Bill 7029, which is the train bill, where the, yes, train wreck, I agree, where the legislators chose on the last day of session to pass so that students now have an option to no longer stand and they are forcing school districts to now put that in the Code of Student Conduct. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, we used to have, said students had to stand, but now you cannot force them to stand.
And I know we have to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state of Florida, but I don't think this one is one that, I think that we can all stand.
One minute.
Well, and it does, they have to have that written request by the parent or legal guardian in order to be excused from reciting the pledge.
That, that did not change.
Right.
Okay, and that can, the child leave the room if they choose to do so, or just...
No, I don't think the child can leave the room. The child just, you know, with a note from the parent, they do not have to recite the pledge and they can remain seated. And they can't be disrespectful, they can't disturb the class or anything else. It's just that, basically, the only thing that's changed is that we used to have all the children, all the children, all the students stand up to do the pledge and now with a note, they can remain seated.
Do I need three times to ask the audience about this?
I still have...
Okay, sure.
Okay.
No.
Yeah. On the athletic eligibility require, standards that we're putting in here now?
That, that will not be in this. That will come to you, I think, for, to react, to advertise that.
So we are not approving that in this?
Right.
Okay. But my, but I still have another question with that. How did we, I mean, did we miss this or did this just come down? Because I know eligibility changes aren't actually next school year, right, but the following school year in dealing with open eligibility.
Correct.
So these, where did, how did these changes happen?
Well, I know, and Mr. Sheffield, I believe, prepared this part, but I know that, you know, we need, I think there's a consensus and I think what the law says is that although you have all of these, you need to put these in your Code of Conduct because then you can stop the transfer of students back and forth as long as you have a policy in place to, to prevent, to prevent that as long as it's laid out in there. Because there's a statute that I don't have in front of us, notwithstanding everything else, you know, if you put this stuff into, into your policy, and we're required to have it in there. But I don't think that that actually takes effect until the 17, 18 year.
This, excuse me, this part was part of 7029 and they said it had to end with this year's Code of Conduct. The only thing, it doesn't take place till 17, 18 is the opening enrollment. Everything else as far as transfers will take effect July 1st.
So this is something we have to put in this school year's Code of Conduct? No, I mean, we're not going to be able to get it printed in the books?
Well, all the districts are facing that, the same thing. And so we're looking for, we were trying to get it put in there, but we're going to do the addendum, but we, but House Bill 7029 says it, you have to have athletic eligibility in your Code of Conduct.
For next school year?
Yeah.
So there's going to be some costs associated with this, right? Because we're not going to have it in our student Code of Conduct. How are we going to get that out? Are we going to be able to email it to them or are we going to have to give them a hard copy?
We're going to have to make copies and we print it. Add them to the book, you're right. There'll be a little bit of cost associated.
Tallahassee will pay it, won't they? The cost. As they always do with their mandates.
And we had to go through this with the baggy pants. They did the same thing with that and mandated that we put it in the Code of Conduct and...
There's other things that are being added too. Mr. Bradshaw and I are working, we're half the day on some, I ironed out language for different things, but there's more that's got to be added, all part of that that's, that's come out. So there's just absolutely no way, if we delay printing the Code of Conduct, then we're going to be in violation for not having the Code of Conduct to hand out to the kids when they come back to school. The problem is if you don't approve the Code of Conduct as, as was advertised and you pull it, then by the time you put this in there and re-advertise it, you're not going to be able to get it to the printer time from the start of school. And I think Mr. Mullen said it would probably be like September, October before you're able to hand it out. We're required to have them a Code of Conduct when they start school. At the beginning of school. But this way, I mean, yes, there will be some additional costs for, for copy costs and those types of things, but with the timing, there may be a couple of things that we might have to do later on, but the majority of it will be an addendum attached to the Code of Conduct so that at least they get everything at once.
Okay. So in regards to a question on here, on these, like on three, number three, on the athletic eligibility standards, the social media issues, inappropriate comments or, and/or pictures, I take it that's verbatim from statute?
No, not that one.
Okay. So my question then, on the discussion of this, are we going to have another discussion time for this?
On the 28th. On the 28th. That'll come back along with the pledge language that's in there, along with that, along with the transfer of students from one classroom to another, parent request for transfer students, parent request for transfer from an out-of-field teacher to a teacher certified in the field. All those are going to come back on the 28th for discussion, modification, questions, those types of things, and then approved to advertise 30 days out.
Okay.
And which I think will run, you'll be able to approve it at the August 9th meeting?
August 10th, 9th or 10th.
9th or 10th meeting, which is the day before students come back.
We'll have it all approved the day before students come back. It just may not be all printed out and like that, but we'll have to approve.
Because that is one thing that I would like to hear, what the plan is for those inappropriate comments on social media, how we're going to regulate, or how we're going to...
Well, we already have that now.
Right.
We have that in our, our non-negotiables.
Okay.
That if there's any kind of reporting, and usually we have to, we have a, we have to have a screenshot or a, you know, picture or whatever, something from, from social media or a picture of an athlete with alcohol or tobacco products, the schools, the schools basically, we have that in our non-negotiables that there's a punishment that goes along if you're making inappropriate comments about coaches or you're caught with alcohol and stuff, you can be punished for those things right now.
Held to a higher standard.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's things that are brought to the attention of the athletic director of the coach and that's in their school, or in that...
Oh, yeah, that's our...
There are situations where, where there are actions, we can't do anything as far as, you know, a suspension or an expulsion, but they can be, you know, they can affect their eligibility.
Right.
Right, their participation on the team. Because the coach can say that, you know, that's inappropriate comment. It's a privilege, not a right to be a part of the team.
I'd like to do a second call, anyone commenting on the 16-17 Code of Student Conduct? Anyone? Third call? Okay, now time to vote.
Just the one thing for clarification, so we're required by law to start the school year by providing a hard copy to students for the Code of Conduct. That's correct?
Right. Me and Mr. Mullen were talking about that today. I'm hoping with the way that everything's going digital that we will be allowed to, you know, to provide a posting for that and have, you know, and have that work, but the way that...
Makes the most sense.
It does, but the way the statute says is you have to have a Code of Conduct, that a written Code of Conduct is delivered to the students at the beginning of the school year.
And, and again, you know, I think the difference is, is in past legislative years, in some past legislative years, that process was a little more smoother because, well, for one thing, they let, they let the educational committees make those, those recommendations and you knew whether it was coming to the floor for a vote, unlike as we found this year when the last day of session, they, you know, materialize, avoid what, you know, circumvent the committee process and then just make a new bill on the floor. So it's just remarkable to me, again, that, you know, we're, we're held to one standard, but the legislature is held to a different standard.
With that being said, we'll move on to the next one.
We have to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. Thank you. And now we'll move on. To approve to readopt the current attendance boundaries for the 2016-17 school year with no changes for elementary, middle or high.
Move approval to readopt the current attendance boundaries.
Let me make two more calls. I'm sorry, I always give this...
Oh, go ahead, no.
Second question, anyone want to speak to that issue about the readopting of attendance boundaries? Third call? Now, Mr. Kennedy.
Move to approve the readoption of the current attendance boundaries for 2016-2017 school year with no changes for elementary, middle and high school.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve to readopt the current attendance boundaries for the 16-17 school year with no changes for elementary, middle and high. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. Thank you. Next is to approve the revisions of Policy 2.70 prohibiting discrimination including sexual and other forms of harassment. Anyone would like to address that? Second call for the Policy 2.70. Anyone want to address that? Third call? Motion, please, to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the revisions of Policy 2.70 prohibiting discrimination including sexual and other forms of harassment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. Thank you. Next, we have approving the Policy 4.60 District and Statewide Assessment Program. Anyone wish to address that? Anyone wish to address Policy 4.60? Third call and last, anyone wish to address Policy 4.60? And motion?
I make a motion that we approve Policy 4.60 District and Statewide Assessment Program.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Policy 4.60 District and Statewide Assessment Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. Thank you. Next is to approve the revision of Policy 5.51 Health Services Plan. Anyone wish to address that? Anyone wish to address approving the revision of 5.51 Health Services Plan? Third call, anyone wish to address the revision of Policy 5.51?
I move to approve the revision of Policy 5.51 Health Services Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the revision of Policy 5.51 Health Services Plan. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. And last, approve the revision of Policy 6.115 Teacher AIDS Paraprofessionals. Anyone wish to address that? Second call, anyone wish to address approving the revision of Policy 6.115? Third and last call, anyone wish to address approving the revision of Policy 6.115 Teacher AIDS Paraprofessional? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Move approval to revisions of Policy 6.115 Teacher AIDS Paraprofessionals.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the revision of Policy 6.115 Teacher AIDS Paraprofessionals. Discussion? Vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carrie score zero. Thank you. Bryant, closing the public hearing. And now we're going to board members, committee reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I still have questions for our attorney on legal matters.
Okay, but then we'll back up.
Okay, yes. Yes. I wanted to ask Mr. Bradshaw to give us an update on the, on, the referendum and the situation right now, what you've heard. I know you went to the board county commissioners meeting today.
I went to the board county commissioners meeting today. I had to go at one o'clock, you know, shortly thereafter for their open session because, to attend this meeting. But I appeared in front of them and asked them if they had any questions in regards to the referendum. They did not have any questions. There was a gentleman who, Chris Lloyd, who came to speak before us, you know, back when we were adopting that. He got up there and told them, you know, you have to approve this. And I kind of clarified to the board that, you know, they don't approve the referendum per se as they agree with it. It's, what the statute says is that the referendum has to go to the governing board of the county, which shall place it on, on the ballot. So, it's a pass through. I was expecting to get a phone, not a phone call, but a text message to see if that had passed yet or not. But they might not have even gotten to it. It was down at like G five and depending on how that board flows, it might not, you know, made it there yet. I also talked today to the supervisor of elections and went over the, the way that it's positioned on the ballot and everything. And so, as long as the, um, board of county commissioners does what they're supposed to do, it'll be on the ballot for the primary election. So, it's good to go. Thank you.
Any other comments to address around attorney? Any questions? Reports, Mr. Mullin, do you have something you'd like to share? Mr. Kennedy?
Just that, one, when we were at Florida School Association's training, that one of the things that they talked about was that Citrus County was awarded silver medal for Florida healthy school districts. And we were one of the only rural counties in Florida to have that. And I was very proud. Put another one up for Citrus County.
Yep.
Also, we received a wonderful press release where, talk about how encouraging our scores were in the state. And also, Ms. Commissioner Stewart made some positive comments about Citrus County, increasing seven percent points in both Algebra II and Civics, improved by six percentage points for students younger than high school age taking Algebra I. Ninety-one percent of the students scored a level three or higher and increased by five percentage points high school students in Algebra I, which is not easy, especially last year's assessment was tremendously challenging. But, you know, the other one is, we were seventy-two percent in Civics. I think that says a lot about, you know, what Citrus County puts with regards to that. And, you know, as a district, we were math for, for, we were sixty-five percent levels three above. That was sixth in the state. And in fifth grade science, we were sixty-two percent. Again, the state, just to give you an idea, they averaged below fifty-one percent. We were fifth in the state for that. I know you all received that, but I wanted to make sure that we at least shared that publicly. The other thing I, I just wanted to share is I had, I've been going around visiting colleges around the state with my son. And one of the interesting things that I had was at Florida Institute of Technology, sometimes referred to as Florida Tech. I went into the media center, or the library, they still call it, and the, um, the maker spaces that we have in our schools, they just have a college version of that on those top floors. Someday, maybe we'll have, we'll have 3D printers, but right now they'll have 3D printers for the students to do that. The interesting thing, Dr. Gettis, I think I shared this with him, that there was difficult to find in the library? Traditional books. They, there was only a small section of them. Everything was digitalized there. And they said, actually, the books are almost more of a novelty than they are as part of, you know, a process. They actually, everything is digitalized. So, I was, I was actually kind of shocked to walk into a library, college library and not have that. One of the things that I thought was interesting though, that the professors were talking about there, and there's interestingly been a couple of articles recently, but that they are suggesting two things, that they encourage students that are looking to go into STEM to take drafting. No surprise to Citrus County. They really felt that that was a critical skill needed because it taught Autopad and some of the things that, again, no stranger to this district. And coding, particularly C plus plus. They said that is becoming pretty much a standard for students that are going into engineering. And I know that we were beginning to exploring that. And I hope we continue that because it's, you know, what they were saying is it's something that's needed for really all of our students to have. So, that was it. And I just want to thank this board for, again, supporting learning of not just our students, but of board members. I got to finish and become what you all have as certified board members, so I got to join that. And Mr. Dodd, I know, has been diligently filling out all of his forms and getting his points because you were running around getting your points. So, I thank this board because, you know, going there, not all boards support the learning of also their board members. And I think that just says something, again, about this board. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Dodd?
Well, one of the things that I wanted to, I had two things to go over. One is on our health insurance plan. Again, I know we're getting some updates on that. I don't know if it would be appropriate at the workshop if we're, if we need anything there. But I assume at the next meeting, we'll probably have another update on where we are. Could, could we get that information on our self-insurance plan and where we stand? And hopefully, you know, maybe we'll see some improvement. I mean, you can't really say that that's anyone's fault. I mean, it's just, you know, where we are.
Us are rising.
Yes.
Even in April. Even rising.
Okay.
Workshop, the June workshop?
Well, it's up to.
I think they planned on doing a monthly update.
Right, that's what I thought.
And I know that Mr. Fishman, then we're out of town.
Yeah.
I think that was their plan. Spring something all month. They just let you know, like, when they get the new awards.
Yeah, right, right. So, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter to me whenever they have the information. If it's at the workshop or the board meeting or, or, but I didn't want, you know, I know we're trying to stay on top of that. The other thing is, I think it might be a good idea in light of the school year that we had this last year with a couple of safety incidents and also in light of the tropical storm that we had threatening the coast just a few weeks ago, and also seeing some other events in the state, in the Orlando event. But that we look at our school safety planning and I'd like to maybe have an update on that. I talked to Mrs. Hemm a little bit about that for maybe a workshop topic. Although, I'm not really sure if it needs to be, you know, a long one. But I, I would like to just get the update on what we're doing proactively this summer. And I know we talked about the SROs, working with the principals. And we do have new, quite a few, a large number of new administrators in, you know, principalships and assistant principalships so that we get an update in reference to our school safety plan. And as we find out more about events that have taken place, as well as, we have a new emergency management director in David Carlo in the county. And, you know, we haven't, thank the Lord, we haven't had to use our shelters very much at all in the last, what, eight or ten years. But, you know, we. Yeah, I haven't said that. Why not do that?
Was that one year we used a lot?
Yeah.
You jinxed this.
But I would like to just get a little overview, update, maybe if that would be something that we can work out for the workshop.
The only thing I would say is that safety and security is not outside of the public. Depending on, depending on what, depending on what kind of information, you know, because obviously, you know, the most safety and security places are probably where, so to speak, with that information. Maybe I'll try to give them a sample, see what kind of information it is and just make sure that, depending on the overview of it, we might need to have it in the session.
And as for the hurricane training and those types of things, we can bring back to you as a reminder about which schools are designated for animal friendly, special needs shelters, just so you all are aware of that. As a reminder also how we train our principals and any other principals who have trained that overseas that shelter.
So, maybe some of it can be in and out of the shade.
It can be all of it. So, we can bring that back.
It may be a blend in.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Depending on the texture of the environment.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Well, I too enjoyed our trip to Tampa. The advocacy thing was very helpful because of our half cent sales tax that we're asking our constituents to vote for. St. John County, I believe it was, was the one that had passed it. And they gave us some really good ideas that I just want to share with you. She said organized and strategic, schools and teachers. She recommended a Simpson's Advisory Committee. That might be something for you to consider, Miss Hemmell. She also told them in their county, because they've got beaches and everything, forty percent of the tax would be, would be paid by outsiders, people not in the county. She recommended that each school's website, not just our website, but each school's website, say something about the half cent sales tax. And she recommended a superintendent video.
And, and Mr. West, they did talk about factual information. They, so, I know you're going to talk in a second, but that was. I wanted to say that just so Miss, so Miss Bryant didn't get in trouble for a second. They talked about it being factual information.
We talked to Beth Sweeney from St. John's County.
Yeah, she was there.
I talked to Beverly Slaw.
Okay. I talked to, I didn't interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
Our school board attorney conference, I spoke to Frank Upchurch, who's the attorney for St. John's.
We started a PowerPoint that, once we get that completed, then the public press ban, we will put a link on our website. You go to that, which we can show people on each school. So, someone goes to that website. Chris has developed a logo that he will share with you at the June meeting. And once we get that, we're working on talking points, frequently asked questions and videos. Which they all have a link on our website. Very good. And we'll bring all that to you during the meeting, as you want to.
And, Miss Bryant, as you know, one of the things that they talked about is, and Mr. West is going to maybe mention this here in a second or this, staff has to can only provide, you know, factual information. But board members can express opinions. And so, that. And we do have them. And, but just that, so, and that became some of the conversation that they had when they visited. But information sent out from the boards using anything to do with tax dollar paid must only be factual information. And that was pretty drilled in during the presentation.
And some specific facts too. I mean, I was reading some election here. You can't say this is all transportation because that's way too big. You gotta say we can buy six buses. So, it has to be drilled down. So, it's very, so it's very.
It certainly does because the lady there from Hernando, Hernando County passed one too. But they didn't mention that they would need some for technology. So, they can't spend a penny they got on technology. Not much. Poor people. And they paid for a special election.
Yes, it is. They paid, like, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one. St. John's paid, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand.
Just so there's no confusion though, you know, you can express your opinion, you know, of a school board, you know, an employee, you know, can stand in public and talk to someone, say, go on for it. You know, but you just can't, it can't be an expenditure of school monies to do it. So, you print factual stuff, which obviously you can't use any monies to say, please support or vote for or anything like that. So, there's a little fine line, you know, there to walk, to talk to. This reminds us, that's what they, that's a great detail. Miss Hemmell, Mr. Mullin will talk about this.
And they did talk about, you know, callouts, using the callout to, again, provide factual information with that. But also our email system, again, as long as it was factual information. So, I thought that was, that was.
So, if I were to speak to a group of teachers at a school faculty meeting as an elected official, I could share my opinion. Is that right, Mr. Bradshaw?
Can I get back with you on that? I think the answer is yes, but because you're not there spending any monies or anything else like that. But, but the other thing is, is that y'all, we also have a policy though about political things on. If you tend on doing that, I'll give you a call.
And you know, really, when you stand up in front of the group of people and you tell them, here's what happened, that is dollars, they're going to make you.
I don't think that would be a problem, but I would prefer to defer for a little bit. So, obviously, if you go to the Elks Club, the Kiwanis or whatever, it could get.
Right.
If you wanted to meet them all downtown in front of the Beagle, that's no problem. Right?
Absolutely.
Maybe there's something.
I was just going to mention that the county got another award, actually, Miss Hemmell, with what she puts out in, in the newspaper, the little tab board thing. It's a half page and a full page and gives information about what's happening in education in the county. So, she got like numero uno award in the state for.
And we're going to go tomorrow and receive that award from Sunsboro, which you should do it at the.
Yeah.
FSBA.
Yeah, I did. Because you want there.
But anyway, so we're going to go tomorrow because we're receiving the award for that in circle.
I understand because of Miss Bryant too, she might have had something to do with it, that the Florida School Board Insurance Trust is going to come and spend some money in Citrus County to have one of their training sessions. So, we have our Samsonax here. We get an extra benefit from it. But.
It'll be, it'll be October, the nineteenth.
Just missed that. But, but I appreciate that bringing here so that it helps our economy. It brings exposure to Citrus County and we will treat them right.
And you've already finished with some.
Okay.
And let me know when somebody stands in there.
Right.